We're missing two people.
We've got a minute or two, huh?
Well, according to my watch, it's nine o'clock.
I've got, uh, what's, what does AT&T say?
Nine o'clock. A lot of anxious people out there. I'll just test and see if they were listening. Okay, I'll open the Tulare County Planning Commission Meeting for January 29th, 2020. No information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency at 5961 South Mooney Boulevard. Staff will assist you in answering any questions that you might have. For further information about planning commissioners, let's see the last page. Doesn't have our addresses, but it's got Wayne's phone number, so, uh... So all public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All timed items will be considered following the public hearing when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this one speaking. And we'll start with a roll call.
McElroy here.
Milley's.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Aguilar and Commissioner Pearson is absent.
Please stand and join me to the salute of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
It's your guys' turn to bring some.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna bake some vegan ones.
Okay.
So the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented on this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. Planning Commission may limit the time at the discretion of the chair, that's me. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony of public hearing must... Testimony of public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. And we should invite anyone who would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda to please come up and speak. And when you do, on all items you come speak, we need your name and address because this is all being recorded. So is there anyone from the public who would like to come on anything that's not on the agenda?
Yes. Mike Washam with Tulare County RMA. And I just wanted to present to the Planning Commission our new Sequoia Visitor Guide. The county participates with other jurisdictions and partners with the Forest Service and others in promoting Tulare County and the natural resources and the recreational activities that are available through the county. So I just wanted to share that. That's a brand-new, hot-off-the-press, no one's seen it. You're the first to view it. And then I also passed out a copy of a Runyon report from last May. They come out every May. It kind of gives an idea of how valuable the tourism economy is to Tulare County. So I just wanted to kind of give a couple stats to better understand that. In Tulare County, there's over $430 million are spent for destination visitors coming to the county. There's over fif... Almost 5,500 jobs are promoted in Tulare County from tourism, which accounts for $169 million worth of income to those employees, which further benefits and spreads through the, um, through the local economy. There's, um, a tax, uh, tax revenue of about $16 million total from, from the spending in the county. And we're seeing an increase over the last three years, a substantial increase from 2016 to 2018, increased about 7.9%. Before that, it was fairly flat, but the last couple of years have really picked up again. So I just wanted to highlight that for you and share that information with you. And if you had any questions, I could answer, but that's basically what I'm doing.
Curious, was that numbers of visitors or dollar amounts?
It's both. It's dollars and visitors. And that's a statewide trend. Everything was flat, 2015, 2016, it was fairly flat. In fact, 16 dropped off a little bit in a lot of counties, including ours, but then it's really increased the last two years.
Mike, where will these be available when they come?
I'll leave a few here. I'm gonna present to the board at their next meeting as well. We're gonna distribute these. We have them available if you, if you need some, if you want some at local offices. It's all about getting the information out.
Right.
So we have some available that we could give, uh... So just shoot me an email and we can get some copies out if you want to distribute them.
Is there a means for people coming into the county to stop by and, what do they, county office?
Sure, we have them at the, we'll have them at the RMA. We'll, we'll leave some with the board when I give them to the board. So they'll be around, they'll be in hotels, they'll be lots of places.
Yeah. Mike, how do they capture the data? How do they capture the data?
Oh, this is, most of this is through credit cards, I believe. The Runyon is, uh, associates as a large company that does these statistics throughout the, throughout the state and the nation. I think they base it on zip codes of, uh, of credit cards. They go through all that, run that analysis, so they can see out-of-town spending within that's where the payments are going from some other location.
Is the guide available online as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. I'll follow up with an email and give you the link to it. I don't, I don't know if it's on, I don't know if this new one is online yet, but yes, we have a digital version of it. That if it's not online yet, you would probably be looking at last year's version, but we'll, we'll have the new one on it.
I think the variety of things that people can do in Tulare County is very, um, very nice, so appreciate all the work that went into putting this together.
It's, it's a good partnership, this Corps Tourism Council, partners with various cities have representatives, chambers of commerce, like I said, the parks and Forest Service and, and others all partner in this and, uh, and this is one of the, one of the key tangible items that comes out of that. But we'll be, we'll, we'll, they have a booth at the Farm Show in a couple of weeks and they'll be distributing these as well and other products. And they will go to two, two travel shows, one in the Bay Area and one in Long Beach to promote the county, and that's always successful, and we distribute quite a few of these at those shows. So those will be coming up in the next few weeks as well. Those shows are always usually February, people planning for summer vacations.
Well, the growth that you're showing in '17 and '18, that kind of corresponds with the explosion of short-term rentals in three rivers, same time. When will you be bringing that back to the board?
That will be back, it should be back within probably, um... I'm trying to think if there's any dark dates. Within the next four or five meetings at the most, probably before March. It'll either be the last meeting in February or the, or the first in March.
Cause they don't go dark during the expo, do they, or?
I, you know, I'm not, I'm not certain on it. There's a few, there's not as many dark days this year as there was last year, but I have to check that. But it'll be, it will be soon, very soon, yeah.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Very good. Does anyone else would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Yeah, then we're moving right along. We'll go for the approval of the minutes. Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as president.
Second.
Shane here.
There you go, Hitchens, there you go.
Everybody voted? All in favor say, yeah, we did it. We don't have to do that anymore. We just, yeah. Okay, motion carried. Moving right along, we'll go to, um, public hearings. All actions on parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given at, on, given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on any item. So does anybody want to pull anything? If not, we'll go to A if someone would like to make the motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Do we have to open up the public?
Public hearing, so.
I'll just say for that, I'm Ken Brock, this is my parcel property. I'm happy to attend to one of these. Be happy to answer, I wouldn't...
That's fairly simple, this is a...
Thank you, sir.
Administrative, so. Okay. So someone would like to make a motion now that the public hearing's open on the tentative parcel map, PPM 19024?
We'll close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Um, public, I thought this is... Okay, I'll go, I'll close the public comment on this item. So does someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve tentative parcel map number PPM 19-024. Uh, categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 19-024.
Okay, do I have a second?
He needs to, I'll second that motion. Oh, John beat me. Go ahead, John.
Quick fingers.
Reset that. Go ahead and motion.
Wayne made the motion.
I did it. All right, once already.
So I had Gil.
Second.
And the second.
So Gil seconds.
There's no second on here for some...
Yeah, there is.
Where?
John Elliott did it.
Well, then Gil did it.
Or Gil. Okay.
All righty then.
Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to the next item 4B. Map PPM 19-029. We'll open the public comment at this time. Does anybody would like to comment? Okay, if not, I'd look for a motion from my fellow commissioners. Was it public here? Yes, I knew that. Anyway, someone like to make a motion to approve, please, tentative parcel map PPM
I'll make a motion that we approve tentative parcel map PPM 19-029 categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 19-029 with a final map required and two exceptions.
Push the move button here. Do I have a second, please? Okay, call for the vote, please. Ed Diaz was the second. Tended map was approved. I believe this is just a recommendation, right? Or ours is the file? Okay, that's good. Okay, now we go to public hearings, 5A. And this will have a staff report, so, uh, special use permit PSP 19-081. Mr. Ramos, categorical exemption and a conditional approval of special use permit number PSP 19-081 to allow agricultural establishment on two acres of a 9.6 acre parcel in AE20 zoning. Site is located on the east side of Road 204, approximately one mile east of State Route 65. And David Alexander is our staff to give the report.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch, commissioners. I'm David Alexander, planner to in the county's processing, uh, project processing division. And before you this morning is a categorical exemption and special use permit to allow a agricultural service establishment on two acres of a 9.65 acre parcel in the exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. This is the vicinity map. The property is located at 24949 Road 204 Lindsay, on the east side road, east side of Road 204, approximately one mile east of State Route 65. These are the aerial and existing zoning maps. The subject site is located outside of any urban boundary and is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan with the land designation of Valley Agriculture. The subject site is zoned AE20 and the area for agricultural service establishment contains a chain link fence for security and two C-trains for storage. Site is under a Williams and Act Land Conservation Contract. The county environmental health services division, county public works engineering division, county fire department, and code enforcement have responded to a consultation This is the site plan. The applicant wishes to repair and store agricultural equipment, specifically ladders, on the subject site. There is no water, there are no utilities, they merely use a generator for their repairs. Days and hours of operation, they don't have set days or hours, it's only as needed. Per the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2009-078, condition of approval will restrict the activities to one half hour before sunrise and one half hour after sunset. There are no designated parking spaces, it is not open to the public. Applicant states that there are two employees, not including themselves. And once again, the area for this ag service establishment is approximately two acres of a 9.65 acre parcel. The subject site has direct access to Road 204. There's estimated four trips a day. This, uh, a code violation on the subject property was open for operating an agricultural service establishment without a special use permit in July, late July of 2019, and they applied for a project review committee conducted on October 24th, 2019. And they were approved to turn in an application for a special use permit for a ag service A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. No comments were received. This ends staff report. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one question. David, I see there's quite a long dirt road back in there, is there, maybe I missed it, but was there anything to, for dust control or any mitigating issue requirements?
Yeah, for, um, they're gonna have to have, uh, standards up to for a fire department, so they'll have to do some type of gravel to be able to...
So it'll be virtually all-weather road that...
Yes.
Control it, okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public comment at this time. Anyone who would like to come forward and comment on us, you're welcome to come up and tell us about your project. Close the public comment and I'll go to the Planning Commission, looking for a motion to approve or some comments before that.
Just a question. There's employees that are on-site but not full-time. There's no water, so what kind of facilities do they have?
They, when they are on-site, it's, it's as needed, so if they have, uh, broken ladders, they, that's their staging area to go and repair and then they, then they go back.
Restroom facilities, things like that. Do they bring in porta-potties or is that a requirement?
Says they have it already.
Okay, I didn't catch that.
On the bottom of that site thing. Right, is that correct? In the small print, the... So am I.
I read somewhere on there that there was portable...
Says they have porta-potties and they have an office trailer for bull.
You've been to the site?
Uh, no, I have not visited the site.
Curious, there's a site out there along Spruce that has big, kind of like sun, like parachutes covering the, uh, the work area.
So who wrote these comments, too, on the bottom? I thought that was saying what was there, but show, trailer, office...
Oh, portable toilets, okay.
So do they have these things?
Yes, on-site currently.
Okay.
The porta-potty and the C-trains and a cyclone fence for security.
Did you get your answer, question?
Well, nobody knows. I'd have to ask, yeah, but that's all right, not a big deal.
So would the applicant like to come forward? Is applicant here? Okay.
No.
If not, I'll close the...
I was just trying to orient where it was, cause there's several along that, that stretch of road.
Okay, I'll close the public comment, I think, again, and move on to a motion for my fellow commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15302 pertaining to replacement and/or reconstruction of existing structures and/or facilities. And conditionally approve special use permit PSP 19-081.
Do I have a second, please?
A second.
Roll call. Okay, we'll move on to the next public hearing, 5B, a change of zone. Petition for a change of zone, PZC 19-018 to change the zoning of a 6.93 acre parcel from AE20 to a zone C3SC, Service Commercial, scenic corridor. The site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 296 and Road 158 east of Visaya. And, um, our... Oh, good morning. That's right on 198, is that correct?
Good morning, Chairman Milley Whitlatch and commissioners. The site, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little feedback on the, on the mic here. The site is at the Ivanhoe Turnoff. Denny and Angie McCowen have applied to change the zoning from the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum to the C3SC Service Commercial, uh, scenic corridor zone on a 6.93 acre parcel at the northwest corner of Avenue 296 and Road 158. They plan to develop a mini storage facility with storage of RVs, trailers, and boats. The board approved the zone change initiation on November the 5th of last year. Public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet, also published in the Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. No comments were received. As stated earlier, the subject site is just off Highway 198 at the Ivanhoe Turnoff. The 2018 pavement management system shows Avenue 296, Mineral King Avenue, is having 5,900 average daily trips between Road 156 and Road 158. The Institute of Traffic and Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report estimates that a 100-unit storage facility would generate 20 trips a day with two hours during peak hours, two trips during peak hours. The project will generate a minimum percentage of the total draft, daily traffic on Road 158 or Avenue 296. No traffic study is required. Caltrans responded to a consultation request but had no comments stating that the proposed project would have minimal impact with the state highway system. Here's an aerial of the site. If the zone change is approved, the applicant's proposed demolishing an existing residence and developing a mini storage facility. Proposed site plan is in your packet. The site is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan with a land use designation of Valley Agriculture. Staff prepared an RV LP checklist to determine the agricultural viability of the site and concluded that this parcel would receive eight, eight points, and because it's lower than 11 points, it may be considered for non-agricultural zoning. Project is consistent with relevant general plan policies, is considered a categorically exempt pursuant to Title 14 Cal Code Regulations Section 15061B3, the common sense rule, which applies because the project does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and therefore is not subject to SEQA. It's not located in an environmentally sensitive area and must comply with state and local Parcels to the west are zone C2SC, C2SC, general commercial as opposed to the proposed service commercial. They contain commercial businesses. Properties to the north and east are zoned AE20 and contain rural residences and agriculture. Property just to the south, on the opposite side of State Route 198, are inside the Farmersville Urban Area Boundary and are zone C2SC, C3SC, and AE20 and contain commercial businesses. The city of Visalia commented that the site is three quarters of a mile outside the city's urban growth boundary at Road 152. The proposed C3SC zone allows by right mini warehouses and other establishments engaged in repairing and servicing equipment. Allowed uses include automobile potty and fender repair, bakeries, contractor storage yards, super service stations, and any use allowed in the general commercial and neighborhood This is staff's recommendation in one motion. Do you have any questions for me or for the applicants who are here in the audience?
I have a question. So making it service, I mean, do they plan the service?
House is what they're planning.
So would there be a reason not to have the service designation or, I mean, what's the reason for having the service designation?
Since the zone is a service commercial and the SC is the scenic corridor that's required along that portion of, State Route 198 is considered a scenic corridor by the county. It's not yet designated by the state. That would require another application process through the state. Eligible for the state.
But to answer your question, and service commercial allows for the mini storage facility, so that's the right zoning for this use.
Okay.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners or questions? If not, we'll move along, we'll invite, we'll open the public comment. And would you like to come forward, give us your name and address for the record? Right, right to the right there, that, that's you.
My name is Denny McCowen. My address is 6524 West Wagner in Visalia. I am the property owner of the proposed zone change site. I'd be open to answer any questions you guys may have.
So what do you plan to do to improve the look?
Part of the back property, I'm wanting to expand my existing parcel that I have now. I own a piece that joins this property. I'm a grading and paving contractor, so I'm gonna enlarge my existing yard and the rest of it, I'm gonna build a mini storage facility.
Is that a problem on the parcel, is, is it, the... Is it the same zoning or is it agricultural zoning? What I'm trying to do is to help you make sure you don't have to come back.
My piece now is C2.
What is C2?
Yes.
Okay.
And contractor storage yards allowed in both, through the chair.
Any questions from my fellow commissioners to the applicant, please?
That's pretty straightforward.
Yep. If not, thank you, Mr. McCowen.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good.
Seeing that there are no other people left in the room, I'll close the public comment and move on to looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's a recommendation, is it not?
Recommendation.
Yeah. I haven't read it yet.
Give me a break.
Recommend that the Board of Supervisors to accept a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, Sequa and the state Sequa guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15061, Subsection B, Subsection 3, and the common sense rule. And recommend that the Board of Supervisors conditionally approve Change of Zone Number PZC 19-018.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that recommendation to the board.
Okay, we'll go for the vote now, please. Motion carried, thank you. Have a good day. Okay, we'll go to the Director's Update, item 6.
Through the Chair, Aaron Bach, Planning Director, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Yesterday, during the State of the County Supervisor Vanderpoel went over some of the accomplishments from the previous year and went over what we were looking forward to in the upcoming year. A lot of the accomplishments revolved around infrastructure projects, public works projects, the TOMF, the Transit Operating Facility that we've successfully renovated. And we've been working on that project for going on about five years now. So it's good to see that's been accomplished. But there are many ATP projects, many road projects. You know, the totals were a little staggering to me. I mean, millions of dollars of what the county's accomplished in road improvements and sidewalk improvements and looking forward to more improvements over the next year. I think there's a lot of, especially in early March, a lot of money's been allocated to improve State Street in Washington, which has been a major ATP project for the last, oh, probably going on five years as well. So a lot of these things are coming to fruition now, including Yedeman Seville and the linkages for the water out there. You look at Monson and Sultana, they're working through and finalizing getting clean water for both those communities. So a lot of kudos to the Public Works Department and RMA in general for being able to accomplish so much. Like I said, a lot of these things have been in the works, yeah, four or five years now. So it's nice to see that they're finally being accomplished. Budget was looking good for this year and next year, so it looks like it's gonna be a very, very positive 2020. As far as community plans we're working on right now, Kingsburg's gonna kick off their area plan on the 13th of February. We're gonna do a joint meeting with the city's City Council and Planning Commission there. They're helping us fund our update there. And we are meeting with the city of Delano's Planning Department here shortly to look to do an area plan north of the county line down there. So we'll be working on both of those concurrently. And we're looking forward to kicking off a meeting in Springville to start doing outreach for that, that community plan, which we're anticipating will probably take a couple of years. So not slowing down at all. Moving forward fairly quickly to at least get these three next community plans going since we pretty much have done all the rest of the communities in Tulare County. I know we were gonna give some feedback to the Planning Commission about Lemon Cove speed limits. Johnson was unable to attend today, but we'll be able to do that next time when we come back. We've been working with Johnny and the Road Department to see what it would take to change some of the limits through there. I don't really have anything else. Do you have anything else, Secretary, from the Sequa side?
What are they doing to?
Cove be going back to the Board?
At the end of February, I think it's the 25th, if I'm not mistaken. It'll be the last meeting in February.
What are they doing to State Street?
They're looking to improve all the, well, I know the sidewalks hit and miss to make sure that the sidewalks are consistent on both sides.
Where there are no sidewalks, so is that included?
Yeah, yeah. I thought there was, I could be, I got my wrong street in mind, yes. The full street section, as far as sidewalks, curb gutter. It's a big effort and I don't know the full extent, if it was phased out. But I, yeah. And same with Washington. And that's a little hit and miss as well, so. Yeah, that will be what we'll be looking to working on over the next year.
On the Delano part, is that where Jack in the Box and all that is, or farther?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that Jack in the Box is within the urban development boundary, which is a really small urban development boundary. But we're getting quite a bit of development interests in that area and more so people, old-time family farmers wanting to sell their properties in that area. So there's a lot of interest in expanding that urban development boundary and.
I guess once they figure out what to do with Kmart, huh?
Yeah. And a lot of commercial interest, but also residential interest in that area. So maybe we can recreate some of the magic we did with Kingsburg here.
Aaron, I hear that Tom Tucker, our Ag Commissioner, is gonna bring the hemp issue back to the Board here.
Yeah.
Is there an update for us?
You'll have the update because there are zone changes that are gonna be part of that. So they would come through here first, through the Planning Commission. I think the schedule's trying to get it done by April. So, no, I can't remember if that includes the 30-day period after the zoning. But everything seems very positive and we've been involved in that process. But I can't tell you what it's gonna look like when it gets in front of you. But, yeah, it's very.
Committee in Sacramento, wasn't there some kind of a committee that was kind of the steering committee for what they were gonna do with hemp? Because I remember when he was here.
Yeah.
I asked him why we weren't on that committee.
Well, right.
Because we're one of the largest ag producers in the world.
I honestly don't know if he involved or was involved with that committee. But regardless of that, they are definitely moving forward full, full speed and try to get an ordinance done within that time. Probably by, yeah, like I said, by April.
Also, are there any moves to remodel Sequa? I thought, I've read about that being sort of a roadblock to housing construction. No, nothing?
Well, and.
They were gonna lower the bar?
Well, I think we were talking last time SB 50 and the desire to, and I haven't heard, and it would make sense that they would try to limit Sequa review because that is something that the neighbors who don't want the projects used, told up the projects. A lot of times, it's not the, it's not necessarily the agencies or the discretionary boards, it's the neighbors getting the pressure from the discretionary boards. And Sequa, Sequa's an easy target to use. So I think the movement has been to, I mean, I think everybody's always known that, but they've been trying to work around that, including reducing the mitigation impact fees. And so that, you know, in Tulare County, that wouldn't affect us at all since we don't have impact fees. But the, a lot of agencies, that dollar amount, you know, if you're looking at $50,000, $90,000 a door as impact fees that you'd probably pay for the most part anyway, but might be reduced except for the nexus with Sequa. Because it's easy as an environmental planner to just put mitigation measure $20,000 a door for traffic impacts, you know? And even if you tried to lower, what's that?
What I had read, that they were concerned about, environmentalists were weaponizing Sequa to shut down projects. I mean, that's been going on, obviously, but they were trying to figure out a way to.
Even if the city planners reduce the impact fees on a project for density bonuses and/or affordable housing, the neighbors can still say regardless of that, that impact fee is for the nexus to reduce the traffic, so you can't reduce it. So that's why they're trying to attack it on, reduce the Sequa thresholds for those type of projects. But you, I would remind this Planning Commission, last time the Governor tried to redo Sequa, something he helped create, Jerry Brown. The, all they accomplished was getting the arena in Sacramento done because they were never trying to reduce it for peripheral canals and for high-speed rail. I don't know if they'll be as successful for affordable housing. And I think, but that will open the door for planners to make findings that make it a little bit easier for these projects to go through when the neighbors don't necessarily want them. But again, I don't see that as a big holdup for Tulare County. I mean, we're about as streamlined as you can get for Sequa.
Any further comments from my fellow commissioners? If not.
Oh, I had one thing on the hemp. I know there's a pavilion at the Ag Expo that looks really interesting this year. So there's a push coming from Tulare County, there's no doubt. So we have a moratorium, is that due to be lifted soon, or?
Well, I think that'll be part of this, is the lifting of the ban on.
I heard it was coming up in a month or so.
Yeah, it's gonna. Is that why we're pushing so hard to get it done? Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I understand they wanted to.
It was for a year, yeah.
I understand they wanted to get it done in time to plant for the spring, spring planting.
That's, yes, that's what I've heard, the big push for April is to make sure that some people can at least get in the ground.
From some, some of Wayne's clients who deal in that stuff have told me that the price of marijuana. That's not true, but I said it weren't, it's my friends, but. But since the new ones of dispensaries have opened in Farmersville, the price, whatever the, when I was a cop, it was called a lid, but it's ancient history. But it's gone to half the price of what it was, so.
That's statewide, that's a good thing everywhere.
No, if it's legal, wherever it's at, and there's a lot of supply, of course it's gonna drop.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it may have taken some of the, you know, incentive the people were getting rich. It's not happening.
The farmers grow that stuff. They'll grow some of it.
And he had some interesting comments about the evolution of it. And they're still growing it in Tulare County to take it elsewhere.
Right.
But the, you know, the markets in California are doing what it was supposed to do.
So they can put it in this book here, the hemp trail. They'll have, they'll have a section like going for vegetables and fruit.
We'll bring that back to Mr. Washam so he can put that.
Well, the hemp trail goes to Farmersville and Woodlake. It doesn't go to the tourist areas, yet.
Not that kind of tourist.
No other comments during the meeting and see you in February, late February. We only have one meeting in February.
Your turn to bring cookies.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring them, yeah, that's right. But yours were so good, my blood sugar went over 300.
All the time, CBD, proven pain.
Your ones or the oatmeal?
Did you see Woodlake?
I'm just kidding you.